Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Tuesday evening, January the 2nd, 2024. This meeting is being broadcast on our YouTube channel. I am Hazel Livingston, the Mayor of the Town of Lexington, and would like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Todd Lyles.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Jenny Michaels.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Happy New Year.
To his right is Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Will Allen.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to welcome Reverend Elaine Eskew from New Bethel AME Church to give tonight's opening invocation. And Reverend, while you're coming, I would also like to take this time to thank you and the church for partnering with the town, allowing the town to use a portion of the church's property for access to the Old Mill Trail. We appreciate your partnership in working with us.
Good evening, and we're just delighted to be a part of Lexington. And most of you all, I've shared, I grew up in Lexington, so this is my beloved town. Let us look to the Lord.
Oh God, our Father, we thank you so much for allowing us to come together as a council, the first meeting of 2024. We thank you, oh Lord, for our new mayor. Thank you for all the council members. Lord, we ask that you continue to give them wisdom, understanding, and compassion as they make decisions as it relates to this great town. Lord, we thank you for the growth. We thank you for all the residents. And most of all, Lord God, we just thank you for the opportunity to serve with compassion. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Now, I would like to call Assistant Chief Matt Davis to lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we'll call the meeting to order and ask, do we have any deletions from the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. A copy of the minutes from the council meeting on December the 4th, 2023, and the special council meeting on December the 20th, 2023 are provided in your packet. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections that need to be made for these at the time?
May I move to approve submitted?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any thing that needs to be changed? All those in favor, please raise your right hand, and that is unanimous. At this time, we're going to do our proclamations, our presentations, and our first one tonight is going to a very special young man, and I'm going to ask that he come to the podium up here while I read it to him. Mr. Hugh Rogers, Mayor Hugh Rogers, actually. He was the mayor of Lexington for a while. Mayor Rogers, a proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, recognizing Hugh Rogers for 70 years of practicing law. Whereas Hugh Rogers was born in Lexington and spent his entire life in our great town, and whereas he graduated from Lexington High School and attended the University of South Carolina, where he earned his undergraduate degree and law degree. And whereas Hugh passed the South Carolina bar exam in 1953 and was sworn into the practice of law on December the 21st, 1953. Whereas Hugh has continuously served his community through his law practice, his community involvement, and has also served the Town of Lexington as a mayor and was awarded the Order of the Palmetto. And whereas, at the age of 93, Hugh continues to serve his town and the Lexington community as a better place to work and live because of his unselfish contributions. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, that Hugh Rogers is hereby recognized and congratulated for 70 successful years of law practice and dedicated service to the community, proclaimed this 2nd day of January 2024.
I also ask our attorney, the council. He's also agreed to be willing to give me advice on this journey that I have taken on, and I'm looking forward to that. If he wants a few minutes of space, so we're going to make you go to the microphone so we can hear you.
Okay, good. Reverend Holm, if you will. Got it? Can you hear? One of my hearing aids is out, so I don't know whether I'm talking loud enough or not. I do want you to hear me, and I can't thank you enough. Came pretty much as a surprise. Nevertheless, I appreciate it more than I can say. Madam Mayor and ladies and gentlemen, I wish my good wife, Maru, could be here. She served on this council many years, and I always remember her coming in late, whether in a state of aggravation or not, I don't know, sometime perhaps, back in the days. I wish she could be here, but she just doesn't feel up to it. If you ask me why I keep going to the office, well, there's an answer, part of the answer I want to give, and I want to quote a great Lexingtonian, no longer with us, when he would be asked such a question, "Why are you here? What brings you here? Why do you repeat coming here? Why is this your favorite place?" The person I'm going to quote also finished Lexington High School, 1947, Philip Curtin Wingard, became a lawyer. He became the solicitor of the 11th Judicial Circuit. You may remember that that office was held a long time, 40 years, after Phil Wingard passed away one afternoon when he left, had left court and didn't come back. It's a sad, sad story. But getting to the point of it is, he had a saying, and it was very wise, when asked, "Why do you keep coming back? Why do you keep coming here? Why is that a favorite place?" His answer was, "Everybody has got to be somewhere all the time." And that's partly why I go down to 123 South Lake, not South Lake Drive, I was there for 20 years too, 123 Harmon Street, partly because I gotta be somewhere, but mainly because I love being surrounded by good books and good people, and I'm lucky to be able to do that every day. Plus, they bring me coffee as soon as I hit the door. I sincerely thank all of you for this great honor, and I appreciate everybody listening to me. I'll close and say, I'm trying to keep up with the vision plan. Without a vision, the people fail, the people suffer. So, and if I may say so to you, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would also like to thank Lee Snell for making sure that I knew this was going on and reaching out to me. I appreciate that, Lee. Our next presentations tonight are being read by Lexington Police Department's Major or Assistant Chief Matt Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity. Tonight, we're here to present two awards certificates to two of our outstanding officers for heroism in one account, and the other one, the first one, let's go with the first one, is the 2023 Art Rich Employee of the Year Award. And just to explain to the people who don't know why we call it the Art Rich Employee of the Year Award, I'd like to give a little information on that. Inspector Rich served with the Lexington Police Department from January 2003 to March 2014, and actually was the 2013 recipient of the Officer of the Year Award. Art Rich was exceptional and valuable, dedicated, inspiring, and an outstanding example to all employees and civilians of the Town of Lexington. He was always vigilant to his call of duty, never wavering in his dedication and responsibilities to the Lexington Police Department. Despite his lengthy and difficult battle with cancer, a terminal disease, Art refused to give up and continued to work hard day after day while keeping a positive attitude and encouraging attitude to each one in the office until his passing, March 29th, 2014. Therefore, in 2014, the Officer of the Year Award was renamed in memory of Inspector Art Rich to obviously Art Rich Employee of the Year Award. And this year, we're honored to present it to the first-time officer that's won it twice, the only officer that's ever won it twice, two-time recipient. Mark Merramontes is our award winner this year. He began at the PD in 2001, and again is the only, is this first person to win the award twice during his career. Mark's day-to-day responsibilities include crime scene and our evidence room. And when he first took the job, I thought the crime scene was going to take up most of his time, but believe it or not, for a 66-man department, we have a lot of evidence and spends most of his days doing the evidence work, but always on call with the only crime scene investigator that we have. He's on call 24/7, which, again, we're lucky here in the town, there's not a whole lot of call out, but when he's busy, he's busy, and never, never has a phone ring that he has not responded when asked to. He, he has been with the department for 23 years, and I don't think there's a time that we've ever called Mark and he said he couldn't come. He might say he's going to be a couple hours, but he's always, he's always, always coming. I'm on my way, so for that, we're very thankful. A few things that individuals in the department, when they nominated Mark, said about him, just, and I'll just read a few captions, I won't read the entire paragraphs, but he's here on time, never leaves early, adhered to all company break times. I don't know if that was a joke, but he, that was thrown in there. Proven to be a reliable employee by arriving each day prepared to tackle his work with a positive attitude. Very detail-oriented. He creates an excitement around his team that works for him when he has a lot of interns and a lot of people that are on light duty that work for him. There's always positive, one of the things that was written is always has a positive attitude and creates an atmosphere where people want to work. Treats people fairly, treats everyone in the office equal. No one is better, no one is getting evidence that hasn't said they needed evidence for that court. If they do, they're getting back to line. So if the lieutenant says he needs evidence but didn't, wasn't there, and originally said he needed it, the lieutenant's going to the back of the line. So treats everybody fairly. Adapts easily to many situations, builds great relationships with not only the people in the department, but also the public. And I think another thing I'll tell you, and we could go on and on about Mark, but last year, the Lexington Police Department was involved in a major murder case in our town, and we had a couple of people that were the true lead investigators on it throughout the process. It took a long time to get to court, and through that long period of time, those individuals left the department. So everybody was, when it came time to prosecute, everybody was like, well, who's going to prosecute this case? And unbeknownst to Mark, he was the lead investigator in a murder trial that, he played a great deal in it, obviously was evidence custodian. But from the Solicitor's Office statements to the chief and I, that case was won by physical evidence that we had, but by the testimony of Mark Merramontes, and that was seven years coming. So to be able to stand up and testify in a huge capital case, he did an outstanding job, and that's not the only reason it won this award, but very well deserving if it was only for that one case. So tonight, we'd like to congratulate Mark Merramontes for being honored with the 2023 Art Rich Employee of the Year Award.
the Lexington Police Department's Life Saving Medal, and this is being presented tonight to Patrolman Anthony Morse. And a little bit about this incident, on the morning of September 6th, 2023, Anthony responded to the Riverbluff Apartments for an individual that had reported she was choking. He arrives at the apartment, goes through the front door, and finds the female laying on the kitchen floor in extreme difficulty breathing, if she can even breathe at all. She's to the point where she's tapping on her neck and indicating that she can't breathe, she can't breathe. So his training kicks in, he does the finger swipe through the mouth, he gets nothing, nothing there. He immediately picks her up, does the homologous maneuver, and actually dislodges two larger pills that were stuck in her throat. Stayed with her until EMS arrived and obviously was informed that if he had not gotten those pills out, that she would have lost consciousness and obviously could have lost her life. So tonight, I'd like to present, come on up here, Patrolman Anthony Morse with the medal, and it says, "An acknowledgement and appreciation of his acts of life-saving on September 6th, 2023, with timely first aid which saved a life. Patrolman Anthony Morse responded to the Riverbluff Apartments at 300 Palmetto Park Boulevard in reference to a choking female. Patrolman Morse quickly assessed the situation and performed the homologous maneuver. His life-saving actions dislodged two large pills that were trapped in the female's airway, allowing her to breathe freely again. He remained with her until EMS arrived to ensure the female patient had no further issues. Patrolman Morse remained calm under extreme pressure when a stressful environment. Patrolman Morse's professionalism, dedication, and passion to serve and protect, he is hereby awarded the chief's life-saving medal. On behalf of Chief Terrence Green, congratulations."
community. We appreciate y'all. Now, we'll move into the vision plan. The Virginia Hilton Park construction and renovation. Crews are continuing to do work on the walkways in Virginia Hilton Park. All that is left to be completed on the all-inclusive playground is the splash pad. The park is set to reopen in spring of this year. The Old Mill Pond Trail, work also continues on the Old Mill Pond Trail as the construction of the two main bridges are being done. Once completed, the one-mile-long paved path would wrap around the pond and provide a new space to recreate downtown. And also, I mentioned earlier that we were working with the church to have some actual parking on the six side, highway six side, and that is our vision plan for right now. You can find a complete list of vision plan projects on the town's website. This town will have the traffic update from Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. The Town of Lexington transportation crew has begun removing the median from Whiteford Way at the intersection with Sunset Boulevard. Lane closures are expected from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. this week as part of the road improvements in this area. Roadwork continues at the intersection of Thompson Street and Hendrick Street. SC DOT continues to make traffic changes at US 1 and I-20. Expect periodic delays and possible closures over the next coming weeks. I was through there today twice, it is moving along fairly quickly. The next traffic committee meeting is scheduled next week for January the 10th at 8:00 a.m. We encourage you to follow the town's social media pages for the traffic alerts and updates. Please call 803-358-7273 to report any traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway condition, or a pothole that needs repair. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We will now open the public hearings. We have a final reading of an ordinance annexed in Lexington County tax map 5596-01-016 located at 5079 Augusta Road. Is anyone here to speak to that? That concludes our public hearing, hearing none, so we'll move right on into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Jenny Michaels. Final reading of an ordinance annexed in Lexington County tax map 5596-01-016 located at 5079 Augusta Road.
5079 Augusta Road LLC owns 4.6 acres located at that address and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home that is being converted to an office space is located on that site. Properties in the town near this one are zoned industrial and general commercial. Augusta Road is classified as an arterial road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their November meeting and recommended general commercial zoning for the parcel and arterial road classification for Augusta Road. Final reading, approval. Make a motion for final read and approval.
Jenny makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Carnes makes a second. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and I believe that is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Mayor Protem Ron Williams. Appeal of Impact Fee Assessment. Premier Elite Medical Services, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, ma'am. Town Council heard the appeal of impact fees from Dr. Christopher Cooper of Premier Elite Medical Services on September 5th, 2023. Town Council, upon consideration of the facts of the appeal, must issue an order to affirm or to deny the appeal. Given Dr. Cooper's stated intent to occupy the location for one year only with a one-year lease, the change of use would be temporary and not create a new demand for municipal services as contemplated in the impact fee ordinance. Therefore, no impact fee would be required for the temporary change of use. If the change of use extends beyond one year, the change would be considered permanent and require an impact fee. Actually requested here is to issue an order to affirm Premier Elite Medical Services impact fee appeal due to the temporary nature of the structure use and change of use. And this will not make an impact to our budget of finance, so just do a refund. So I'll make a motion at this time to issue the refund.
Mayor Protem makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Smith, second, is there any discussion? Councilman Carnes, thank you for bringing this to the forefront of a solution. I believe it was you, wasn't it, that recommended?
Yeah, we all worked together, but I think we found a solution to bring equity to the deal, which is what we're here for.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that is unanimous. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes, and that is the appointment of our new municipal clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Section 3128 of the Town of Lexington Code of Ordinances requires Town Council to employ a municipal clerk. Town Council has reached a tentative agreement to appoint Laura Henson as the new municipal clerk and needs to ratify that appointment. So, Madam Mayor, I make a request to appoint Laura Henson as municipal clerk.
Councilman Carnes makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Lyles, second, is there any discussion? I know I'm excited, and thank you, Jane, for filling in and helping us and keeping me in line. I appreciate you. Any other discussion? And no other discussion here, none? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and that is unanimous. Wow, y'all making this easy. Do we have any announcements tonight? Does anybody have any announcements they would like to make, Council? Any public comments, reference, agenda items?
Happy New Year, everybody. Greg Brewer, 349 South Church Street. I just wanted to say that I thought that the concession made on the impact fees was a good move. And further that, I think some of the resistance that we've all heard, and I saw the article where the three of you were quoted in the Lexington Chronicle, and that gave some insight as well. And I agree with your comment, Gavin, that some of the developers should shoulder some of these types of fees. I think some of the resistance that we're seeing from the public related to fees like this, the H tax, has an easy remedy, and that would be to give more visibility on how that money is being spent and honoring 52150, state statute that requires quarterly reporting of those expenses. I think that would really raise the knowledge and awareness of the public about how their money's being spent. So with that, that's my simple request for all of you to consider, and I'll follow up. Thanks.
We appreciate your response, and we appreciate if you give us a chance to at least have a work session so we can have conversation with each other, and that is going to be on January or either February's work session, so you can look forward to hearing it.
Yeah, and I'd just like to, for the record, Hazel asked for all of our top five items to get knocked out for the first part of the year, and that was included in it. I fully agree, we should have itemized expenses on the website, and I want to go back to 2015, so I look forward for us getting that on one of the agendas coming up soon.
Madam Mayor, if I can just add something. Long before the election and before this became a popular election issue, this is something that I brought up shortly after I was elected. Something that I probably worked on when I worked for Governor Haley back in 2010 was H 5004, I believe, but it was government transparency, and that's something I strongly believe in, that's something that Hazel and I, or excuse me, the mayor and I have been working on long before her election as mayor, and it is something that we've been working behind the scenes with our staff. Thank you to Kathy and her staff for helping us understand what sort of man-hours would go into this. So this is something that you should expect to see coming up on the agenda in the next couple of months, but it's been long overdue for the town staff, for all the work that they have been working on. So I just wanted to thank Kathy and her team for helping us put together what those reports would look like, and for all the work from this council that's been going on behind the scenes as we prepare for those public discussions in the coming months.
Is there any questions from the news media? None? I almost forgot y'all. I jumped over y'all for some reason. I'm still getting a feel of this, but I do appreciate all the staff and everybody that's been getting me accustomed to what I'm doing and getting me moving forward, and it's very strange to say Mayor Protem to you because I'm like, that's my title. But we're adjusting here, we're moving forward, and I do look forward to the January and the February work sessions. There's a lot of discussion. Every one of the council members up here shot me back five things that was important to them to work on this next year, and I'm very excited about that, but we've got to come together as a body to be able to discuss those, and it may not be a quick resolution to get through all of them because some of them's complicated and some of them's going to require a lot of work, but I do appreciate it. And Gavin, Councilmember Smith, I do appreciate all the work you have done behind the scenes already. So with that said, I'll... So with that said, I'll close this up, say that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the Town Council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Tuesday evening, January the 2nd, 2024. A recording of this meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel. Without objection, we are adjourned.